And if everybody would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, December 5th and December 19th. Right now, we have nothing on our agenda for the 5th, so I'm going to recommend that we cancel that meeting. Do I have a motion to cancel the meeting of December 5th?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our two, our next two meetings will be December 19th and January 16th. And I'll just take a quick minute, um, we have, let's see, one set of minutes to approve. Bear with me. So, Mike, Craig, Steve, John Eichman, and Ed, you guys were here for this meeting as was I, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, and any abstentions? Nope, okay. Great. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the extension of final approval for Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan on Route 52.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, my name is Dr. Jerry Scheck, and I guess you know we've been going through this process for 500 years. But basically, we just, we, we're looking for another 180-day extension, I believe that's all we need to finish this up.
Okay, so, um, it, it sounds like we have, uh, we had some confusion around what was granted for you last time. Because the last time you were before us for an extension was November 15th of last year, and you were granted a six-month extension at that time. Although there was, there was, there was conflicting understanding that some thought it was a six-month, some thought it was a 12-month. I think you had a change of professionals in the middle there and maybe something-
Correct. Right, we had some engineering changes and-
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so-
Okay.
So I don't know where it got lost there.
Okay, so normally, what we would do with, with an approval like this is it was already expired at the time you requested the extension. Because we understood you had some changes on your end, I think the town also had some, some changes on, on our end as far as what we had documented as the extension. So if the board is amenable, I think what we're recommending, and Tom, keep me honest here, is that we would amend our original motion from November 15th, 2016, to be a 12-month extension.
Alright, okay.
And then we'll talk about a further extension at that point. So do I have a motion to amend the extension granted on November 15th, 2016, to a 12-month? And by just, um, another side note, the site plan amendments, we typically do a year, and that's why it was unusual to have done a six-month extension, and I think that's where the-
So moved.
Issues. So I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that, that brings you current, and you're currently, you're requesting another six-month extension. I'm going to strongly encourage you to ask the board for a 12-month extension, so we don't have confusion.
That's, that's fine. Hopefully, we'll be set, but, fine.
Normally, what we would do, your original site plan was granted in 2014, December of 2014. You, you're now going to be on your, this will be your third extension. Michelle, you and I had talked about this, it doesn't look like there's been any law changes that would have changed your site plan. So whether you came in today with it or three years ago, there's no laws that would have changed, that changed the site plan.
Okay.
So we're in some other plans at this point in time, we might have asked you to do a law review or something like that to make sure that, for instance, with a subdivision, did you need to lose any lots or anything? Did something change? That's not the case with your plan. So unless anybody has questions or there's any comments from our professionals, do I have a motion to grant an additional 12-month extension, which would take you out through November of 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion item for Beekman Garden's site plan on Beekman and Clove Branch Roads.
We have an amendment to the site plan that I brought in hard copy, so I'd like to pass it out to the-
Okay, so you made a change to the plans that we have?
Yes.
I actually spoke with Sam, and in the meantime, I believe you've probably had another conversation with Duchess County.
Yes.
We, we talked about a conversation he'd had with Duchess County, and I asked him to just make a change to show what he knew-
Just regarding the crosswalk or was something else?
It was regarding-
Yes, that and other things, and I'll go through these things with everyone, I just want to make sure that you all have what you need while I do that.
Okay.
Can I give two to this table?
And we can share up here as well if we need to, that's not a problem.
Well, if I could just hold one, that would be great.
Sure.
I think there are five there.
Okay. So I think you've been, the last time you were before us was a sketch plan review, so this is your first kind of official application submitted discussion. So if you would, just, um, provide the board with a, with an overview of what you're doing, tell us where you're located. I know most of us have heard this, but just-
Okay.
Because you're in now with a more formal application, let's run through it. And then if there's, again, if you can highlight where there are changes between the map we reviewed with your application and the current map, that's fine.
Okay. In summary, we're seeking a change of use for an existing historic barn at 171 Beekman Road, at the intersection of Beekman Road and Clove Branch Road. The barn, which is currently zone residential, would, is proposed for use as an event space, a warm weather event space, uh, during the warm months of the year, spring to fall, afternoon and evening. Okay? And, uh, just to structure the discussion, I'll, I'll start by saying what I have as the open issues from our last discussion, and those are going to structure what are the changes to this plan. So the major things we talked about were site access from Beekman Road and Clove Branch Road, parking arrangements, and septic system planning. Okay? So the basic change from what was submitted at the beginning of November to what you have today reflects discussions with, with the Duchess County Department of Transportation in the meantime. So we submitted to the Duchess County Department of Transportation at the same time our plan, our proposal to have a crosswalk at, at Clove Branch Road. So we, we heard last week that they, they don't think it's a good idea, they don't want us to have a, a crosswalk there. And so, uh, since then, we've, we're proposing therefore to incorporate all parking on-site, and so I'll, I'll take us through that. So there is no, there is no more proposed crosswalk on Clove Branch Road, there is only a proposed commercial drive on Clove Branch Road. That still will require permission from the Department of Transportation, they're amenable to it now. We have to confirm with site distances with engineers that those will work for this commercial drive in this location. But they're aware that this is where, this is where we propose a new drive, and they're amenable to a new commercial drive there. Okay?
What do you think that does to your site? I mean, how much of a setback is that?
It's, well, well, you'll see, we've, we've made provisions for parking on the site. Basically, our proposal was to have, as long as we could have parking off-site in the overflow church parking, that people would walk across, walk up a path that went along where our proposed drive is going to be, and, and get to the barn that way. And that, and we proposed that the planned parking would be future parking, so now that won't be, now that will just be part of our project.
Okay, I don't think it's-
It looks like you've put an additional lot in from the plans we saw.
Yeah, we did, we did. We have, oh, we have proposed overflow parking there. We would love to have over, we'd love to have the parking lot of the church as part of this project. We've, we've talked to the church, they're amenable to it, but it's, it's just a problem getting across the road. Now, now, the Department of Transportation is open to other arrangements, like having a, uh, either cars valeted, or even better from their point of view, having a van that could pick people up and drop them off, I guess, as a group. So there are alternatives here where we could still use that parking. I, I think it's important to remember when we're, when we're talking about the parking, that ultimately, our capacity, that, we've, we have talked so far about the ceiling of our capacity, which is 150 people. And that is based on the, um, proposed public portion of the barn being used as an, as an event space, divided by the number of people for, um, unconcentrated seating. And so that, that is our upper limit, that's 150 people, now-
Is that with or without employees?
That is without employees. Because the employees are using the other spaces that aren't public, so that, so, but again, this is our ceiling. So that number is further, um, determined by where our septic system will go and how big it will be, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Parking actually doesn't really impact it because the parking, as far as we have determined, is, is based on square footage, it's not based on capacity. It's based on the public part of the building, which is a certain square footage, that said, and if it's treated as a restaurant, then we have to have a certain number of parking spaces. If it's treated as something else, then we can have another number of parking spaces. So, uh, ultimately, we're never talking about a situation where we need to use all of the parking in the church. You know, there's, the requirement for parking there is just not, 150 would be the max that would ever be here, probably.
No, where I was coming from was historic structure.
Right.
And suddenly surrounding it with parking, I have to admit, kind of detracts from the historic feel of the place.
Well, I, um, when we've talked a little bit about these open issues, I hope we can talk about the next steps, which involve everyone looking at the site and, and, and seeing for yourselves how much you think that might impact what's going on there. Uh, what we've proposed here to accommodate all of the parking that a restaurant on this site would require, that's assuming that we want to treat this in the most stringent terms as a restaurant, rather than, say, a place of public amusement. There are other things that, that it may fit, but, uh, we've just proposed that where you would have a certain number of people that are, let's say, the most people, that you would have overflow parking there. And that, that overflow parking could be accommodated not in a, not in a gravelled space, but adjacent to that space on the, on the site as it exists. So that's what we've marked there as overflow parking. So the proposal would be to build the parking, build the access drive in the parking lot from Clove Branch Road. That lot would be gravel, and adjacent to that would be provisions for overflow parking.
But essentially, grassed area, not any sort of striped or-
That's right.
Marked area.
That's right, and so-
It would have to be regraded and then turf established, you couldn't park on the slope as it stands today.
Probably that will need to be reworked. If we, if the board decides that we need that overflow parking and that other provisions for parking in the church or, or elsewhere on the site are not acceptable, then yes, that will have to be regraded, that's right.
Can I just say one thing, Sam? I think what Sam's saying is that he's waiting to hear what number, capacity, the board may entertain at the site to determine some of these other things. And also, the fact that the septic system may drive that, because we're not sure what the health department is going to allow as far as, he's saying the max capacity that the building can handle as far as the public is 150 people. He knows that the number of what is actually going to be allowed there is probably going to be between zero and 150 people. And that number, I guess, without having landed on that number, it's hard to determine exactly what the parking requirement is going to be, and also, um, what the health department is going to require as far as septic and, and what are improvements to the property. So there, and it may or may not, it may be that we need, meaning the planning board, needs to go to the site to see what we think, you know, we may say right off the bat, when we look at the site, there's no way there's more than 50 people that can be here. Or we may say, well, you know, it's possible to allow a larger number, but, um, this and this and this has to happen. So I think that's, I think that's where he's going with the conversation, the conversation's a little circuitous for that reason.
What do you think that number is?
Before I say what the number is, I want to say just a bit more about the septic situation. Because basically, the, what's driving that is the size of the leaching field, right? And we've identified two places on the site plan where the leaching field may be, there are economic, uh, restrictions or guidelines there in the form that if we have to put that leaching field up on top of the hill, we have to pump everything up there, it's much more expensive. Suddenly, it's much less realistic to have this as an event space if we're spending so much money on pumping the septic up to a leaching field there. If we can put it in, uh, in the hatch location, bottom left of the site, uh, on the lower grade, where there is already an existing field, there may be some other places where we can put it, but that's really the best place. Yes, there is a well in the house next door, and, and there is enough, there, it's 100 feet from that well, it's over 100 feet from the well. So within the 10-foot setbacks from the property line, 100 feet from the well, if there's enough space to do it in that field, that will inform how big, how much capacity we'll, we'll ultimately seek. My guess is that the number is, uh, seems to me around 100, uh, under 150, over 100 is, is best there. Let's say 120 people there. 120 would be the max of everyone in both major rooms of the space for the whole time. Now, could you have 100?
Plus your employees.
Yes, plus employees, plus, plus employees moving up-
What number of employees do you think you're going to have?
Probably depends on the event.
Let's see, if, if food is served, um, which, which it would be served, not prepared there, but served there, oh, for, um, for 100 people, my guess is that, oh, I don't know, eight employees could serve everybody. If it's a buffet, then you don't need waiters for everyone, they're working in a separate-
Do you have a band or something like that that's going to add?
Yes, yes, yes.
So entertainment.
Yes. So let, let's say, you know, I, our major interest here is to, is to preserve some flexibility for the site. You know, if, 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 if we're investing in, in turning the site into an event space, we need to be able to have some flexibility there. So if the total number of people approaches 150, with some of those people, there's, there's a separate space, uh, on the lowest level, where food would be prepared and brought up from. There are balconies around the, the main space, so you wouldn't have everyone necessarily in this space all at once, but we're interested, we want that number to be, we just want the most flexibility there. Doesn't mean that we'll always have that many people, in fact, probably there will usually be many fewer people there. But my, my feeling is that somewhere between 100-
For the first 25 spaces?
Absolutely maxed out at 150. But my guess would be just having, uh, just being familiar with that space, that 100 is probably the, the normal maximum for that space. Going back-
And you think the septic is going to drive that number?
Yeah, I do, I do. Because ultimately, the, the consideration here is economic. We really want to avoid pumping everything up to the top of the hill.
So putting the septic down where you have it in the hatch marks here, it's, that number's around 100, 120?
Yeah, that's right.
So, Michelle, for the special permit itself, is, because the planning board wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily assign an occupancy on a building, is this part of the special permit that would require us to do that, or?
Well, the special permit is, gives you, um, a little bit of leeway. And essentially, what it says is that specialized business uses of low-traffic volume, um, appropriate to the structure and compatible with the neighborhood. So that's what you're sort of weighing, and, um, they, it, it said sit-down restaurants not to exceed, one of the examples they give, but they, they don't keep you to this, but they say one of the examples is sit-down restaurants not to exceed an average seating capacity of 50.
Right.
Okay? Unless the preservation of the structure necessitates a larger size.
But to me, I mean, a sit-down restaurant, that's going to be operating seven days a week, it's going to have-
Right.
You know, or six days a week, whatever, it's going to have a different kind of feel to it than event space, which wouldn't be every single day. And I'm sorry, you, just a quick question, you said afternoon and evening, but your application says nine to midnight, is that still what you're intending? Nine AM to midnight?
Uh, yes, in, yes, yes, in the interest of max-
So it's set up in the morning, or you actually would have events in the morning?
Uh, it's possible that, that there could be events in the morning.
Okay. So it's still nine AM? Okay.
And regarding the preservation of the building driving the capacity, there, there are basically three major spaces in this building. There is the main barn, two-story barn space, a loft space adjacent to it, and another wing, uh, off another part of the building. So we're proposing that spaces, two of those spaces be used here. This, and it's from those spaces that we get our capacity of 150.
Michelle, you said we have some purview here, but we wouldn't, so let's say the planning board said we're comfortable with 150, if the health department comes back and says your septic system supports 100, I mean, we're not the governing agency as far as-
And I explained-
So I just need to understand how that's supposed to work, I don't want us to be in conflict.
I, I spoke, after we had our pre-meeting, I called Sam, and I spoke with him, and I said that for purposes of tonight's discussion, it would be really helpful for him to get whatever information he could have from the Duchess, Duchess County, because we really, um, there are certain things that we have no purview or no jurisdiction over. And one of those things being the septic system, and we talked about how, at some point, it may, you know, if he need, if he can't put it here, and he has to pump it up, it almost becomes, uh, you can't do it for economic reasons. So that's something that they've got to determine, and then at that time, when I was speaking with him, we did not know, I, I, he was not able to tell me how much capacity this field could accommodate. So it looks like you've gotten additional information on that, and so you're presenting that now.
This is based on preliminary discussions with, with engineers.
But I think-
But have you done any test pitting or anything, any perk test?
No, it hasn't been done, you know-
Test, anything?
No, because actually, getting a plant, a septic plan itself is a significant outlay. We want to make sure that this is a viable project before we invest in this also.
But just to do so, but, I mean, just to do even some preliminary perk tests, at least it would tell you whether the soil's going to perk or not, and you'd be able to, I mean, you don't have to go through a full board-
Whether you have rock or not.
Right, whether you have rock or not, yet, I mean, to do some basic, um, soil tests, I think would give you, you know, a lot of information to kind of hone in on what you think that area down there, you know, by the road would be able to support.
Right, right.
I mean, you know, until somebody does that, it's basically just throwing, like, darts at something.
Well, we're not asking for approval without any of that done. What we, what we are asking for is that, uh, the next steps be taken, not approval granted, and then we understand that, that any approval will be contingent on the septic system being where it should be, on the number of people that it should be. We, we're not asking for any approval for any capacity that isn't restricted by that, we just want to keep this process moving while that other part comes into focus with the under, with the board's understanding that all of these things are in development. So yes, we, uh, we would anticipate that that would be known before we ask for final permission from the board.
Well, well, I mean, I don't want to-
Got a moving target here.
I don't want to speak for the planning board, but, I mean, I don't think I would be able to recommend the planning board consider approval if you hadn't even made an application to, you know, the Board of Health. I mean, I would think that, you know, we would want to see the application into the Board of Health and know that it at least has a chance, you know, of passing through the Board of Health before we issue, you know, conditional. And I would think that, I would think that you as a service to, you know, your client, would want to have enough information to know that, you know, that, you know, you're going to be able to get it, like, approved. So it's kind, I mean, I understand where you're at, it's kind of a catch, catch 22, but on one hand, you know, if you go too far into, you know, the planning process and you haven't done any, you haven't done enough work on the septic end to know that it's going to work, you know, it's kind of a chicken-
So realistically-
Chicken and egg, a little bit.
If you go and you do your deep test, and you know you got at least a six-foot-to-rock or whatever, and you do your perks, and you got a 15 or a 20-minute perk, at least you know it's a viable location.
Right.
But if you come up with a 60-minute perk, or you come up with three feet to rock, then you know you got an issue.
Right.
That you need to address, I think, before you even go any further with the planning board.
Well, we have some preliminary soil information for this site, which has been reviewed by the-
At this location?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you did your deep test and you did the perk test?
We haven't done the test, but, but we have had it, uh, we've had a very provisional look by engineers who've said, more than one has said, yes, that's a viable place, based on what the survey says the soil is here.
Soil survey, Duchess County Soil Survey, just looking at a soil survey map, it's not based on actual actual-
It might be helpful, yes.
So let me just, I'm going to say this a different way than what Scott's saying. We want to make sure that, that you understand that if, if we make an assumption as a planning board, that this is where you're putting your septic system, and then the health department doesn't give you that approval. Everything you're doing with us is going to be subject to that approval.
We understand.
So if you can't get that approval, you're back at square one.
Yes, we understand. And, and maybe it would be helpful for me to clarify the things that we are seeking from this meeting, there are two. One is the arrangement of a visit by the board to look at the site, so that these particular issues can be considered. And the second is the opening of this proposal to public comment for the month, the 30-day period before approval would be given, so that, that we can work on these other things in the meantime.
You're not, you're not ready yet for public hearing.
Okay.
So we, we have to get some of these answers first and understand what you're doing here a little bit, that we wouldn't set a public hearing today based on where you are in your plan.
Okay, so, so then, clarification about next steps would then be what we're seeking today.
Good, okay.
You know, I, not put words in my, but I think everybody here kind of likes this proposal, we like the idea of it, but I think it's being, you know, the, the bandwidth is going to be set by the septic-
Mm-hmm.
And then the parking, right? And, and coming up with some kind of an accommodation. Once, after that, I think everybody here likes this idea, and then we'll, you know, go along and help you out, but-
Yes.
I, I would second that, I think conceptually, you've got us on board, but we don't have enough detail to work with. And I thought at the last meeting, a number of these issues were raised then as things that you were going to go investigate before you came back to this board.
Yes, as I, as, as I understood at the last meeting, making contact with the health department, making contact with the, but that's, that's different from having a complete septic plan, right? And the perk test done, this, these are two different things. So net, now, if that's what we need to do for the next time, well, now I know. But, but that's not, that's not what was proposed at the last meeting.
But I mean, the other things like the number of windows, um, you know, those kind of things, the, the drainage plan, that kind of thing, I mean, those are all secondary to getting these two issues, because that's going to bound the number of people, and, and, so.
Let me just say, did you discuss sprinklers with the health department?
No.
Oh, okay.
And it, and do they need to be discussed with the health department? The fire advisory board is-
Provide water supplies?
Well, they'd probably have a tank if they had to, but that's a building code issue, right? Had it, I mean, but we would want to know where the tank was, if they were going to have to have-
I think the health department's going to want to know as far as storage for the, for the water system and the yield of the well and all that stuff. At least it should be vetted with the health department, at the very least.
So the, so the well needs to be tested, or the water from the well needs to be tested?
Well, you have two different things, you have potable, you know, as far as your water quality, and then you have your water quantity, so you have, you have two things. But if you have a, you have an engineer on board, or, I know you're an architect, but do you have an engineer on board?
Uh, yes, well, actually, we, we've, we're soliciting proposals from a couple of engineers for the septic issue.
That's what you need to have, is an engineer.
Yeah, yes, well, well-
I'm going to think it-
Yes.
It does?
The applicant has stated they are going to install them.
The fire advisory board requested that, and the applicant had agreed to it.
150 people in an old barn, I mean-
Well, then, maybe just to clarify everything is, I don't think the board's asking you to file an application and get approval of the septic.
Mm-hmm.
They're just saying, do the perk test, have an engineer look at it, and he or she can render their professional opinion as to whether or not that looks like a viable place for the septic.
Uh-huh, okay.
As far as the Board of Health with the water, I think what's being pointed out is, the Department of Health normally makes sure you have enough storage for your use, et cetera. But when you have a fire sprinkler involved, that requires an extra capacity, and they do weigh in on that, whether they have absolute jurisdiction, but they weigh in on it to see that it has no impact on a potable water supply. So I don't think that necessarily would require a full design, but it is going to probably require some more information about the well yield-
Right.
If there's going to be enough there.
And so who, who does that test?
That would be a professional engineer would do, supervise whatever you do, what is 72-hour pump test or whatever. Some kind of a pump test, yeah, whatever. See, he's, see, he put his, he put his hat on tonight, thanks. I think, and then, I think that clearly would then be the view of the board, if I'm summarizing it right, is that with those preliminary studies and answers, you're going to be able to make a decision, you know, if the water is going to accommodate 100 people, then you know that you're limited. If the septic can go there, and the area's big enough for 100, then we're talking 100 people, then you come in with a plan with enough parking to handle 100 people plus employees, a little different, probably a lot different on this site than 150 with the employees.
And I would recommend you, you contact a sprinkler company and start understanding what that demand's going to be-
Yeah.
Before you get too deep into it with the health department as well.
The, the parking, just to, just to-
See, the parking is, is, as you said, it's based on square footage of the facility.
Yeah.
And the planning board has many tools in the toolbox to work with you on it. They have a special permit that allows them to waive or reduce built parking-
Okay.
Provided that, as you, it's been alluded to, you can show that it is possible to put additional parking if necessary.
Okay.
So I think that the board, and the board's utilized it many times, so I do believe that, uh, those tools are there, but it's all going to be driven by the, what the site can support at any given time.
Right, right.
But, uh, the parking though, um, are we going to have to, um, have to work with him on a certain number of people per, you know, vehicle? Because this is more of like an event, uh-
We're, we're going to have to, yeah, once we have a better idea of what the capacity of the site could be, then we can start looking at what would, you know, what should the traffic look like and what should the parking look like.
Even like a shuttle van over to the arch-church parking lot, if they're amenable, I mean, that's the worst-case scenario.
They're not proposing that right now, they're proposing on the sudden parking, so-
I don't think anyone would think that is one vehicle per person at a catering hall. Right. I think, you know, it would at least be 75 maybe, maybe less than that, but- Because, because even, even with the two parking lots that are shown, you know, the main one and then the one that's, you know, potentially could be expanded, there's only 42 spaces, you know, total there. So if you were to, if you were to assume three per, per car, just as an ass- So if you were to, if you were to assume three per, per car, just as an assumption, that's a hun-
Which is high.
Which is probably high, that's 120. And then, between, you know, the waitstaff, you know, the van, maybe there's another 15.
Employee parking is on the lower level.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm just, I have a.
Actually, well, there's, the handicap parking is on the middle level, and there's space in front of the, there's space at the lowest level for employee parking. Now, it hasn't been marked there, but that's at grade, can, it, now, so, is that, is that additional parking that's required in addition to the required parking? You know, so, so if that is something that we need to do, then we need to know that.
From a site plan perspective, we'll look at your site and identify the use of the site and the square footage and other things to, to determine a parking requirement. And that should be inclusive of anyone who might be parking at the site during an event.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, but it's also okay to say, hey, there's going to be employee parking over here, and there's going to be customer parking over here, and, you know, however you're sorting it out. I see that you've put the ADA spaces up close to the building.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell, it looked like they, is that paved or is that gravel?
Uh, it's gravel.
Normally you want those on paved.
Uh, yeah, the space around the parking stalls themselves can be paved.
Okay, and, and to the point where they can get to that ramp that you're building?
Yes.
I think you have a new, either sidewalk or ramp shown there. You just need to make sure that somebody with crutches or a wheelchair or something like that is able to move on smooth surface, not gravel surface, to get into the building.
Okay.
And this building did not have elevators, is that correct?
No, no.
And you're not proposing an elevator?
No, we're not. So, the, the two spaces are connected by an existing stair. Basically, every space is accessible, but, but you can't get from one to the other in an accessible way. So someone who is in the loft space in a wheelchair would need to go out and around to get to the main space.
But there will be ramps and not stairs that someone would be able to.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So in other words, everything is accessible, but just not.
Part of what you can show us if we do the site visit, you, we can kind of get a sense of the layout of it.
Exactly.
I know I personally haven't been in this building or to this building before, so. Okay.
Just while we're on this subject of parking, I, I have just a couple of questions. Can I ask about this?
Sure.
Uh, so you, you see that we have the, the radius, or the turning radius marked for the emergency vehicle? Can we use that drive for parking? Can we use any of the circular drive for parking?
You, only if you would show the cars and have turning radius around the cars. You can't, you can't park in a fire lane, is another way to say that.
Right, right, but, but as you, but the, the emergency vehicle, as we show here, would not use that, would not need to use the loop of the drive. So can we use that, that for parking if it's not used for emergency vehicle access?
So that's something, our traffic engineer, our traffic engineer isn't here tonight. One of my questions for him was going to be, I see that you show a vehicle entering the property, I'm not clear how the vehicle is exiting the property. It doesn't seem like they're making the loop to get back out.
Uh, I see.
So you may need to finish the.
In which case, no, yeah, right. In which case, no parking in that spot.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Right, right. I think your, I think your ADA spaces are fine, I don't think you, that they would be interfered with, but you, you need to show the full circulation to get the vehicle in and out.
Okay.
So, Michelle or Scott, I'm not sure who, we made the comment that the nearest well is at least 100 feet from the proposed septic area. Is that, is that the right setback for a commercial septic? Because this is a business use, not a residential use that's being proposed.
As long as the well is up gradient, right?
Yeah, yeah, um, it all depends. As long as the septic is downhill of a well, it can be 100 feet.
Okay.
If the septic is uphill of a well, then it's got to be 200 feet.
200 feet.
So, in answer to your question, it's basically the same whether it's residential or commercial.
Okay, so they don't make a distinction on volume or anything like that, it's just a matter, okay, all right.
Well, I'm surmising, because.
Okay.
And the well in question here is actually, the closest well is the neighbor's well, not, not the well on this property.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, I, I wasn't sure though, again, where the neighbor's well is, if it's up or down, and if it's meets either, either setback. So we just have to make sure we know that. The other thing I was going to comment, I, I have no, no, no issue in theory for the way you're proposing this parking, but it did look like you have some pretty steep slope here. So have, have you made sure that you can get a driveway profile that meets the town requirements?
Yes, yes. That, that's what dictated the, the drive in this location. Basically, we originally had it from the, from Beakman Road, but that's too steep.
Okay.
So that's why it is where it is.
Okay, and then the, and I'm sorry, I'm just, I can't remember from your application. You didn't have any, any fill coming on or off site, based on the creation of this driveway, because you're going to have to move some soil around.
That's right. But we're not, we're, we're neither bringing in nor, nor removing fill.
So you have a net zero.
So, are the section lines shown for the drive there sufficient for the profile of that drive?
That's a question for Pete.
Oh, you need an actual profile.
I didn't see a driveway profile, but I might have missed it on the, on the layers.
I mean, you know, you're going to have to have, I, I assume, you said you're, you're getting crisis from several engineers. I assume that that would include a drainage plan, and come up with a drainage plan, because if you're going to be disturbing more than an acre here, which I believe in your application, it says, it says that, you know, you are between, between the parking lots, then they'll have to, have to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
If less than an acre, we won't have to, is that right?
Well, you still, you, you still have to prepare a drainage and erosion control plan.
Uh-huh.
It's just, you know, the cattle, just, you know, the Chevy model versus, you know, the Cadillac model.
Mm-hmm.
If you're, if you're under an acre or over an acre.
And what, what else has to be done if it's over an acre?
Uh, your engineer, like, will know that. If you just make sure that they understand, you know, a drainage plan, drainage and erosion control plan, if it's, if it's, if it's under an acre or if it's over an acre, they should, you know, they should be aware of the requirements.
But that's net of the disturbance for the septic, right? So I don't, they should be able to keep it under an acre, right?
Gross, gross disturbance.
Gross, gross disturbance.
Oh, it includes the septic, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep. So most likely with the septic, it's going to be over, it's going to be over the acre.
Plus we're not showing stockpile areas and things of that nature that are going to be necessary to construct this.
Yeah, it's preliminary at this point.
And so do stockpile areas need to be shown for the final application?
If you talk to your, to the engineer, when they, when they prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan, it includes, it includes all that information, you know, the stockpiles, erosion control, construction, you know, entrances, you know, drainage plan. It's a, you know, it's a host of things. It's laid out, whatever, whatever is, whatever is, you know, there's a cookbook for what has to be in a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Okay.
Don't know.
You're, you're also showing a new covered open air shelter across Beakman Road?
Yes.
So, is that where you're going to have pedestrians going across the road, or how are you going to?
Well, uh.
I think you'd have the same issue with crossing Beakman Road as you might have crossing Clove.
Yeah, yeah, we may. So we may have to remove that as something, it, it could be there as just something that people look at, not go to. Little gazebo.
Okay.
Could be there for the use of the owner.
Okay.
Uh, once, one set of comments that we received on the plans mentioned that we didn't have construction details for drainage walkways and stairs. Are those required for the final application, and how detailed do they need to be? They're not on the checklist, as I.
Yeah, I don't know what to say. I mean, you know, we need to, typically when we do a site plan, there's construction details for, you know, the parking lot, you know, the thickness, you know, the pavement, um.
It's not paved, but yes, okay.
Or whatever it is, you know, gravel, you know, stairway-like details, ramp, ramp-like details. I mean, there has to be enough detail on the plan that the planning board approves, so that you can give that plan to a contractor to go out and build.
Uh, okay, okay, as distinct from the application checklist, which doesn't say that. But, okay, okay, so, we have to provide construction details for town approval, for these site improvements? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anything beyond walk, drainage walkways and stairs that needs to be detailed in this way? I just want to make sure that we, we have a complete application when we, when we come to you.
I think you need to get an engineer who's familiar with site work planning, because we can't sit here and give you A through Z of what you need to do to come up with a site plan. That's not what we're here for.
Uh-huh.
Okay, honestly.
I mean, if you talk, if you, depending on what engineers that, you know, you're talking to, you should, it would be helpful if, if they have, you know, experience, they don't have to, but helpful they have experience before the East Fiscal Planning Board, and that they will know what needs to be shown on a site plan map in order for you to get site plan approval. Even if they don't have experience in the town of East Fiscal, as long as they're experienced with obtaining site plan approvals.
Yeah.
They will know the level of detail that, you know, any engineer needs to show to get, you know, site.
We have a bunch of them on file, right? I mean, you could come in and look at other site plans, I mean, that's.
No, get an engineer.
Perfectly acceptable to come in and look at other site plans?
Get public documents.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Michelle, let's, before we set a, a site visit date, let's just walk through the special permit in your, from your memo, if you don't mind. Let's just make sure that the board is comfortable that we're, that we've met where we can meet with this application, all of the requirements. So I think, if you want to just walk us through it, I think the first thing is, we just need to be comfortable that the proposed use, I know that this special permit is a little bit limited in the way it describes things, but that, I want to make sure if the board has any feedback on the proposed use versus what the special permit guidelines are, we just need to make sure we've documented that.
Right, so first of all, um, just, the, the site is on the list of, it is in the historic survey.
So we've confirmed that.
So we know that for certain. Um, so it's eligible for this permit. The, it says, the permits allowed by, or the uses allowed by the special permit are specialized businesses' uses of low traffic volume, normally associated with history, the arts or cultural uses appropriate to the structure and compatible with the neighborhood. Um, and they give some examples, artists or artisan studios, art galleries, antique shops, rare book, coin or stamp shops. And then they also allow resident or professional uses provided they are appropriate to the structure, compatible with the neighborhood, and are located on a state or county road that can accommodate increased traffic. So it is located on a state or county road, and they, these uses may include the following, sit-down restaurants not to exceed an average seating capacity of 50, unless the preservation of the structure necessitates a larger size, bed and breakfasts not to exceed 12 rooms, professional offices not to exceed six employees, and then multifamily residential uses. So, um, this gives you a little bit of wiggle room, it doesn't tell you it has to be exactly one of those, but it needs to, again, be compatible with the neighborhood and be of, you know, relatively low traffic volumes that it's, and.
So these are examples of acceptable uses, not the only uses. So, um, the way this is being proposed as periodic use during warm months, does anybody have any concern? Again, assuming we're probably somewhere between 100 and 125.
Have we ever issued this permit before?
I don't believe so.
I don't ever remember.
I don't, I don't know that we've ever issued it. I mean, I know we have a similar.
I think Bikin Hall House is one with this permit. That may actually be the genesis of this permit.
Of this permit, yeah.
I'd have to check that, but I think that's.
I vaguely remember that. Okay, sorry, just curious.
So any questions or concerns on the proposed use? I think it fits, I'm comfortable, I want to make sure if anybody in the board has concern.
I, I feel.
Again, we don't want these folks going too far if this, if it's not something.
I think an occasional 100 is in the neighborhood of a steady 50.
And then I just wanted to remind the board that you can also put conditions, you know, use restrictions on it. So if, if for example, you just determine that, you know, 50 people or 75 people is the maximum number, or you could say, you know, up to two events a year when they can go to 100, provided they provide, you know, X, instead of, you know, where the typical, you might not have to have, say, for example, a van or a valet. If they go up to a certain number, then you might have to have a van or a valet. There's certain things that you can do to make you feel more comfortable about allowing certain things to happen.
I think we have to get closer to what the septic is going to allow you to have as a capacity before the board would probably get to that point of making those decisions. But that would be something we can do, once you have your site plan, even during the public process. We can, we can come to those recommendations based on public feedback and things like that.
So does that mean that the capacity doesn't have to be settled before, before?
No, you should have your capacity, at least you should have, I think, to, to, what our professionals are recommending to you. You should know whether your septic is not viable in that location, and therefore your plan's a no-go, because you've said you don't want to pump up.
Right.
Or that, you know, the septic is only going to support a smaller number of people. You, you should have.
Right.
Because you're going to propose to us different parking, potentially different ingress and egress, again, based on the way you're going to place your parking and where your septic may be, that sort of thing.
Right, okay.
So it's, the reason we're encouraging you to do this and, and recommending that you do this is so that the changes that would have to actually happen on-site, out to the drawings you're making, we understand before we put you in a public process.
Right.
The other things, like, like Michelle's mentioning with valet parking or something like that, those are things that, it's not going to be drawn on the plan, it may be a note on the plan, but that, those are things we can settle later on. We're trying to make sure you have all the information you need to hand as a plan that's actually viable.
Right.
And that's to your benefit and to the town's benefit, so that we're not kind of churning the process too much.
But we've never conditioned that, you know, you can have 150 people as long as 50 people agree to hold it. That's the one thing we can't condition.
Right, right.
That's going to be the number.
Yes.
Okay. And then, Michelle, I think there was, that you, on page four of your memo, we actually had, just had the recommendation, I think this needs to go to the ARB, and some additional comments on traffic generation and things like that.
Right. So the ARB is supposed to look at any of the, the changes to make sure that whatever renovations they're proposing would still be in character with the original structure and, and compatible with the neighborhood. And then the, we have to make sure that the resulting traffic generation will not overburden the existing roads. So we have to look at that carefully, and make sure that they can, you know, get ingress and egress without causing problems along Clove Branch, they have appropriate site distance, all those kinds of things.
Okay. And I, again, our traffic engineer isn't with us tonight, but before, the next time we saw you, we'd make sure that, that they reviewed your driveway location, and if you had, you'll receive feedback from them if there's any concern.
Okay.
You should know what your site distances are and things like that, they may have questions for you. Also need to clean up your turning radius, so we can see how the vehicles both enter and exit the property.
Okay.
And I think, do you have your outsite elevations done yet, the drawings of the building, so the ARB could actually review this for you?
Yes.
Okay, have you been before the ARB yet?
No.
Okay, so I think we would recommend this board would refer the applicant to the ARB with the elevations to get that process going as well. Have you, have you submitted to the, and I apologize if you have, I haven't seen the, the drawings yet, do we have the drawings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. You can, you can work with our planning office on the, on the ARB process, architectural review board, ARB.
Right.
Okay. So let's, does the board agree we'd like to go see the property, let's set up a site visit? If that's, everybody's amenable to that, any concern, okay.
I just wanted the access around the drive-in halls.
We typically would do these on, say, a Saturday morning, I, because the daylight hours don't really allow us to do this after work, and most of us have day jobs. We would probably ask you for some type of weekend.
Yes.
Time to be able to meet you at the site.
Yes.
We like to set a specific time so the quorum of the board can attend. Is there a day that works for you better than another?
Uh, let's see, I.
We just need someone to meet us at the property, I mean, we, we wouldn't let ourselves into a property.
No, 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 no. Not this Saturday, after Thanksgiving the next Saturday.
Okay, is that December 2nd? Okay, does that work for everybody? Does anybody have any?
I won't be available.
Okay.
Sadly.
Okay. Do you want us to find a different day so you can attend?
If everybody else can make it, why don't you go with that?
Any concerns? December 2nd?
Saturday, it's fine.
Okay. John, if we need it, if you wanted to have access at a different point, we can just coordinate with the applicant to set up a separate time. Um, Michelle and Pete, Scott, are that, that day okay? December 2nd, what time works for you?
Uh, could we do noon?
I can do noon. What about other board members?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Pam, can I just ask, if you could send us an email reminder for December 2nd at noon, maybe a little bit closer to the date? I don't happen to have my phone on, on deck right now, so.
December 2nd at 11 a.m. is not going to cut it. No.
December 2nd at noon, you'll meet us at the site, we'd like to be able to walk around with the site and the interior of the building, just to get the feel for the space. It'll just help us understand a little bit better, the, just the, what you're proposing and how it's going to work.
Okay.
Great. Do you have other questions for us before we let you go tonight?
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
And, and for review of past permits, at least as far as the scope of work that's required for submission, how can I do that? With whom should I be in touch to review those, if those examples are available?
You just come into the planning office.
Uh-huh, okay.
Our, our planning office is in this building, it's, if you, when you come in the door, it's straight down, it's the first door in the, in the hallway behind us here.
Muse.
Okay.
And they're, we're open, normal town business hours.
Okay. Okay, great.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Kuchersky amended site plan on Clove Branch Road.
Hi, I'm Stan Kuchersky, I'm the dentist who owns the building on 129 Clove Branch Road. The building was built 14 years ago, the CEO was given about 13 years ago. And initially. thirteen years ago. And initially, the building was designed for, to be about total of sixteen thousand square feet, eight thousand on top, and also eight thousand on the lower level. On the top floor, I have half of the space, and the other half is, is occupied by the New York State Police. And originally, Pavel Engineering did the original work for the septic for ten thousand square feet. At that time, I didn't have the extra funds to do two thousand square feet downstairs. Now, I would like to apply for, um, change of, of planning for storage to a regular, uh, commercial space.
Okay. And it's, are these tenants that are in place right now? I saw from what you submitted to us, it said very specifically who is occupying.
It is occupied now.
Are they in place right now?
Right.
Okay.
And, and those new uses, I thought it was an interesting letter. It's kind of circuitous, but it basically said that there were two hundred gallons planned for the downstairs use as part of the original plan, right?
I'm going to commit the letter to the health department that Bill wrote.
Uh, no, the, the, the letter that Bill wrote that kind of outlined...
To the health department.
So the key question I would have for our professionals is, is, you know, and then Bill proceeds to say, look, you know, the, the, um, massage group would require this many people and, and, you know, the, so he basically estimates the number. Is, are those acceptable estimates, or are there set things that say that it varies like per square foot or something like that? Can we just say, based on those assessments of how much water would be generated, that this is allowable?
A lot of times, we send them back to the health department depending on what's being proposed.
Absolutely.
That's not our purview, right?
Yeah, he sent, he, I mean, he did, he did already send something to the county health department outlining, you know, Mike's...
That's the letter Mike's referencing where he lays it out.
Right. I mean, is there a code for that, is what I'm asking? Is that codified?
The New York State Fire Code has a formula that determines what the maximum occupancy of a space is, whether it's for sitting or yoga, or whatever it is. And then based on that, that would be the, just like we have a, a permit here for this room, which was calculated under the code, every location in the town is supposed to have that calculated. That would become the basis that your health department approval be on, because that would be the maximum number of people that could be there.
Okay. I mean, obviously, it works because it's in place today, right? But...
Yes.
So I, you know, the key question is, has the board of health, has the health department ruled on it?
Well, if, if the...
Bill has submitted it as of October twenty-sixth.
And it may not have been the fire inspector calculation of the occupancy. So that would have to be kind of found out, and then it may be that the septic permit is acceptable the way it is, or it may not be. But that's, that's why there's the process to go through, fit up permits and everything to get all those calculations done.
Do you currently have a public potable water system?
Public? No. We have our own septic.
No, by that, I mean, are you monitored by the health department? Do you have treatment and all that kind of stuff for your water, or is it just comes straight off the well?
Uh, straight off the well. But it goes through ultraviolet.
When does that trip in?
You have to have, uh...
Twenty-five, right?
If you, if you're serving more than twenty-five people a day for six months, I think, six months out of, you know, the year, or if you've got five different, uh, connections. So if you've got five, like, suites, but you, you don't have, I don't think you have five, five suites, right? You got your dental, you got your office.
Dental, state police, and essentially that's it on, on top.
Well, so...
And then you have the bottom.
Okay. So has Bill, like, accounted for everything in suite one and suite two? Because he talks about the, suite, suite one is for one...
There's only one gentleman down there, and, and never any more than one.
And then suite, suite two is the massage therapist and yoga...
Massage therapist, which sees maybe three or four people a week.
Wasn't there like a yoga thing for both?
And there's a yoga that comes in a couple nights a week, and there's maybe three, four, or five people.
Yeah.
So it's relatively low usage.
Can I just ask...
Compared to upstairs.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Um, I noticed you described suite one as a photo engineer. What is that exactly?
Uh, he's a graduate engineer from RIT, and his job is to evaluate, um, optics on, um, cameras and copy machines and, but there's no chemicals. It's basically a software.
Not processing. That's exactly what I was trying to get to.
There's nothing that he uses at all.
Is he processing anything at the site?
Nothing, absolutely not.
Because that's usually water-intensive and, you know, with chemicals. Okay.
The only thing I was going to mention is that we approved the site plan. We know what the specific uses are here, but we always have to be aware that in the event that they change use, that doesn't raise the level of, like, if it goes from retail to retail, but the retail use has a significantly larger water use than what's currently being, right now, we have relatively low water usage. We just have to be careful that we're aware of that on the site, because we don't know if potentially, like, if they're, if the health department says that they're close in the water usage, we need to be aware that any, even just a change in tendency can create a problem with the, the well and septic.
What about parking? Is there...
Well, parking, also, I, I, um, now that I have a better understanding of what the tenants are and what they do, I'll try to calculate the, the exact parking requirements. But I think there's, I mean, there are quite a few spaces out there, so I think for what he's got out there now...
Yeah, I think there's sixty-three or sixty-five spaces.
Um, what he's got in there now. It's just, it's just in the event, like, yeah, I don't think there's going to be, it's, there's a dental office there. You know where I'm going with this. If all of a sudden there becomes a, a group of some sort there, that typically creates a lot more traffic, a lot more, higher need for parking, and those are the kinds of things that, that have sometimes happened in other buildings that we end up with problems in.
How many, but how many parking spots did you say?
I think it was sixty-three.
I think it's sixty-five.
Wow.
But, um...
I, I, I would suspect that's going to, that's going to do it, right?
Well, I think one of the other things you have here is it sounds like the yoga studio is probably operating on hours where the dental practice isn't operating. So we have some complimentary uses here where there's...
Plenty of vacant spaces.
There's never a shortage...
Oh, I was going to say that, yeah.
There's never a shortage of, of parking at my office. E- even when the state police do their, um, check where they bring in troopers and do random urine samples, there might be twenty marked cars and another ten unmarked. There's plenty of place.
Um, I did do a site visit because I was looking to look at the, um, location of the generator. And, um, the, there was a plan submitted, but it wasn't a site plan. It was a floor plan, sort of with the, um, generator drawn. So what I...
Right.
Would need the engineer, and I know it was Pavel that did the original site plan, because I pulled the original site plan.
Right.
Um, if he could show the exact location of the generator on the original site plan so that we know exactly where it's located, because it looks like it's very close to your property line, and I just need to make certain that it's not on the neighboring property.
Okay.
And it meets the setbacks, right?
It's the appropriate distance.
I could get that from Mr. Pavel, I'm sure.
Okay, great. So just have him show the location on the approved...
Yeah, because he, he did all the original site work, and he feels pretty confident that there should be enough, um, need in the septic to, to meet the board of health.
That's not up against residential right there, right?
It is. It's a driveway, though.
Where the generator is?
Yeah, but it's a, it's, there's a fence and there's a long drive, so it's not next to a house.
No, it's nowhere near our house.
Okay.
But this is a backup generator. This isn't a generator...
Yes, just a backup generator.
It's going to turn on once a week, and it's going to turn on if you have a power outage or something.
To be honest, I don't know that there's a lot of other locations where you could put the generator, but it is, it is right up against the fence line. And I think, it's hard to tell exactly because the, the partial access lines don't match up exactly, but it looks like it's very close to the property line, so we just need to figure it out.
Any setback requirements for that?
I'm sorry?
Is there any setback requirements for that?
Um, yeah, there, there, there would be a setback requirement. And it's, it's in the, um, well, actually, the, the lot, if I'm not mistaken, is, um, a split lot. So there's a residential zone and a commercial zone on this property, so I don't know exactly where the, um, where the generator falls, which, which zone it's in. So we, that's why we sort of need to make sure that it's all, and then if, if, in the event it's in the wrong location, we might, um, have to get, have them get a variance for it, or, you know, I mean, at worst-case scenario, he would have to move it, but hopefully that would not be the case.
Okay. So, right, the way it's shown right now, it looks like, I'm assuming that the line on the plan is the actual fence, because it looks like fence imposed. Um, it says it's roughly four feet.
But I don't, it's unclear whether or not the fence is on the property line, but it might be. It's just...
Is it your fence or is it your neighbor's fence?
No, it's my fence.
Your fence.
It was required by the town to put it in, and it's certainly in on my side of the property.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so it may meet the setback.
Okay.
What is the setback for?
Well, it depends on which zone that...
Oh, okay.
But, Michelle, you're going to look at that, and if Bill can give us the, um, the revised plan showing exactly where it is in relation to the, to the property line itself. That'll, that'll let us know where we're going with it.
I had a couple of comments. Originally, it was planned for zoning, I'm sorry, storage below. Uh, now that you're using it for retail use, uh, daytime, I wasn't quite clear what kind of lighting you had, but we should take a look at that lighting now. And then in addition, uh, there's a, a retaining wall. It's right around the four-foot mark, and, and you do have a curb that sticks up about a foot. But, you know, in the event somebody were to, say, trip or something, you could trip over that and then down. So if, if this is going to be retail use, this should have a railing, you know, extend it up just in case someone loses their balance, they don't go over that.
That can be added, sure.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Is that on the exterior, Scott? So something you'd want on the site plan, or is that in the interior of the building?
On the exterior.
On the exterior, okay.
That's something that Mr. Pavel can comment on, the height of the, uh...
Sure.
Okay.
Again, when it's storage, less traffic, but it, now that it's open to retail, we have to take different precautions, so...
Right.
I mean, the wall itself, I think the integrity is fine. It's just adding that additional rail on top. And then again, taking a look at the lighting.
Were they, you going to add any new signage, or is it on the existing sign?
Um, essentially, no, no signage.
I mean, this is all existing, right? So it's...
Yeah.
So, so you also still have pretty significant storage space down here?
Pardon me?
You also still have pretty significant storage space down here?
Yes.
Would you anticipate adding any additional tenants?
No.
Not at this time, or no?
I see no reason for more additional storage. I think it's fine the way it is.
No, tenants, I'm asking. You still have a lot of storage down here, space marked as storage space. I'm asking if you would convert any of that in the future to additional tenants.
No, no, not at all. I can't, because that's really where mechanicals are, and, and there's, it wouldn't meet the egress and, you know, for people to come in and out.
Okay, okay.
The original site plan was to have doors and windows where they are right now.
Okay.
Great.
I have this feeling of deja vu that it's, the septic is going to be the key determinant.
Michelle, we, we would not normally put this into a public hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For a change like this? Because it's not, it's, I mean, the generator, we haven't done site, and I know it's a change of use, but it seems a fairly benign change.
This is really just a, um, filling out of originally approved site plans, just to verify that the uses aren't triggering any other changes, so...
So our next meeting is on December nineteenth?
Yes.
If you can get us the additional information, if Bill can get us the revised plan. Michelle, like, is Michelle's time to make sure that we've, we've identified the parking needs and cleared, um, some of the other, some of the other questions. I think, um, you, you'll, you'll come back to us one more time, and again, assuming no zoning.
Will I be getting a letter in the mail exactly, what you want from me to submit?
Sure.
Okay, you'll do that?
I can, I can send you a...
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll pass that on to Mr. Pavel.
Sure. Okay. Um, any other questions, Scott, Pete, Michelle? Anything else we need to cover? And any other questions from board members tonight?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And I think with just a little bit more information, you're going to be all set. We'll be able to document this and just clear, make sure that we don't have a zoning issue here, and, and we'll be fine.
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Heritage Acre, two lot, two lots on East Hook Road. Just to clarify, it is acre and not acres?
It is. It is acre. There's actually another corporation named with Acres in Duchess County, so, we ran across that a little bit ourselves. Uh, my name is Tom Surtiara.
That's our agenda, and our minutes will state clearly the name of the company.
Yes. Uh, my name is Tom Surtiara. I'm with, uh, TEC Land Surveying, and I'm here representing Heritage Acre and the Sina Cuts and Land Trust, um, in the, seeking approval of a subdivision of a piece of property. Oh, there we go. Thank you. This guy comes prepared. Um, seeking approval of a, uh, pretty large, mountainous piece of property, uh, right across from Fish Gill Farms over here on East Hook Road. Uh, in addition to the subdivision of that, we're going to be combining a small one-acre parcel into one of those parcels. The reason for the subdivision, that this is going, this, uh, property is to be purchased by Sina Cuts and Land Trust, uh, parcel...
Parcels are just one of them?
What's that?
Both parcels or just one?
Yes, both parcels. Uh, and parcel, parcel two, lot two here, is going, the intent of that is to be used for farming purposes, either to work with Fish Gill Farms or another farmer, if that's, does not work out. And Sina Cuts and is going to retain parcel or lot one for themselves right now. Uh, they don't really have an intended use for it yet. They're still, they're still kind of coming through the works. There's no, there's no plans or intended use or design or anything at this point. They're just seeking the subdivision as part of the, uh, sale process.
Okay. Um, so, Michelle, I, I thought we had a, and I, I looked at the application, I couldn't find, is there going to be a conservation easement on either of these parcels or any sort of restriction on use assigned to these parcels?
There is, there are going to be some easements put onto the parcels, yes. Yes, conservation easements, as a, a farm easement. Um, I'd have to look at my plans for the, there's some of those maps for the rest.
Okay, so there is going to be some, um, the reason I'm asking the question is that normally, if we are realigning lots like this, we have to make sure that each lot is a, I'm going to call it a buildable lot.
Mm-hmm.
That you can actually situate, based on the zoning, an appropriate building on that lot, that you're not either land, land locking it, or that you're creating land that could never be built because there's no access into the property.
Correct. Access into the property, um, we have frontage for lot two. We have frontage directly on East Hook Road. For lot one, there's frontage also on East Hook Road, and there's also a small parcel here, which is not part of this application, um, owned by Heritage Acre right now, which is also going to be transferred to Sina Cuts and, uh, so there's also going to be some access through that as well.
You're not consolidating those properties together at this time?
Those parcels are not being consolidated, no.
Okay, so there, the adjacent property that you also own is not part of this application at this time, but it is also going to Sina Cuts? But is also going to Sina Hudson?
That is correct. Yes.
And they are going to grant easements, the one to the fire district for the fire draw, and the other to the highway department for the drainage swell?
Do you know where we start with that, Mike?
We're happy to...
Do we, we need to have, I'm sorry, we need to have you come up to the mic so we can catch you for our...
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you. And just give, if you don't mind, your name for our minutes and all.
Yeah, Mike Knutson with Sina Hudson. And in terms of those easements, I know that, that you've been in conversations with the landowner.
Yes, dear attorney, I just want to confirm that...
Yeah, yeah. You know, we, we're waiting to just see kind of what easements come up, but we're certainly willing to work with the town on this.
Well, it's just there's a pullout, I guess, along the road.
Right.
To allow access to the creek for the fire department. So that would go to the fire district.
Right.
And then there's a covert that crosses the road right, I don't know where it is on it, but...
Yeah, it's, it's right over here.
Yeah, and it's just a little swell, so just, we'll firm that up.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Are those, okay. But we'll figure out the, the details surrounding those, and who exactly they need to go to, and when in the process that needs to happen.
And is the conservation easement taken away to development rights, going to keep it open space?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're looking at right now is on, on lot two...
Would be for farming.
Would be for a farm, and we would do that and convey that. The idea would be that we would be leasing to a farmer, and then convey it to the farmer after a certain number of years with a conservation easement.
Okay, but it would still be restricted, no development other than farming activities?
Right. We would have a, a building area in the front for things like farmhouse and farm structures. There'd be, but otherwise, yeah, we would be restricting it for farm uses.
Because I think it would behoove you, if you could give a draft to the easement to the board, it may make them feel more comfortable about not getting into as many details about the development potential of the...
We can certainly supply a map.
Because you had quite a few waivers you were requesting, I think, for their normal requirements, right? So...
Okay, I mean, we have a, at this stage, we have a, kind of a land plan.
Yeah.
And a term sheet, and we could certainly provide some, you know...
Well, just something that would make them...
Even a summary, even just a couple paragraph summary, just to say, okay, here's, here's where we're headed with it.
Just so they're, they're comfortable that a year later, all of a sudden, it's not going to be back part of it for a subdivision approval.
Right.
Which I'm sure it's not.
Right.
The first lot is, is scrub growth today, correct? I mean, there would have to be some clearing for farming.
The farming up here?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, the, the lot, if I remember correctly, was former farmland. It is overgrown mostly at this point, yes.
So it's, I mean, as I'm picturing it, there's no, like, serious trees, but there's a lot of scrub.
Yes, that is correct.
Sapling.
Yeah, we're not proposing any sort of development. If, 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 when the time comes for all that, we'll be back for site plans and things like that, or whoever's doing the work, you know, the farmer who's doing that, we'll be back with that.
So, where is the existing lot line now? I just couldn't find it on the map.
The existing lot line is this entire thing, this is the proposed lot line here.
Right.
Are you talking about the small one-acre parcel that we're...
So, so you have, your application said, hold on, your application says you have two lots going to two lots?
Yes.
But, but I, you have, you have a little one-acre lot, and you have a lot of a hundred and...
These are the proposed lots.
Hundred and fifty-two and a hundred and forty.
There is no line between those right now. There's a small line right here.
Oh, you have a line.
One acre, and then the rest of this, all of this, right here is one lot.
I got it, okay. So that's why you're saying it's two lots going to two lots?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little weird in essence, yes.
Okay, all right. It was, it was just hard to understand from the way the, the plan was drawn. It didn't seem like it was matching up to what you have. So you have, the current lot is only one acre, and the new lot wants, it's going from one acre to a hundred and five acres, give or take.
Two lots here that are still staying.
And I'm saying one acre, I think it's, is it one acre? Yeah?
Yes, it's one acre. It's one little acre piece up in the top, on the west side, or east side, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there also going to be a conservation easement on lot number one?
So I can answer that. So we, we're not sure at this juncture, what would happen with lot one is we would be, we would be taking ownership of it. And as Tom mentioned before, we don't have any plans for that at the moment. We would be looking to, after we take ownership, to kind of, you know, work with the community and decide what would, what we would be doing with this ultimately.
Because...
But we don't have any plan to put a conservation easement on that, this juncture.
My main reason for asking that was, I brought up at our agenda meeting last week, lot one, you know, without doing some more work, but it doesn't appear like lot one really has any, any development, you know, potential, even for possibly like a house, because both of, you know, your frontages along East Hook Road are encumbered, you know, by wetland and, you know, buffer area.
The setback, right.
So, I think that's why, you know, the chairperson, you know, was asking the question as to, we don't typically like to, you know, approve a lot if there's the potential to, you know, develop on it, because then that puts other agencies like the Dutchess County Health Department behind the eight ball, because there's already a subdivided lot, and they have to kind of work with the applicant to try to fit in like a septic, so...
Well, what, what's your purpose for doing this?
Yeah. The purpose is to create the farmland, and then Sina, again, Sina Cuts and is going to retain the remainder of the lot, and try to work with the community to develop a plan of what to do with that parcel. There's, I'll let you...
But just like you said, it's a, basically a useless lot.
Well, lot number one is.
One, that's a big one.
Lot number one is going to be...
Well, let's, let's let you, if you could just explain. Thank you.
Sure. You know, in addition to this subdivision, we're also acquiring on your map, you can see there's a, there's a thin line, and then this piece here, and there's another lot. There's an existing roadway there that, that allows you to get into and connect with some farm roads that then go further back into this property. So there is a way to get back to that. And, you know, Sina Cuts and is a conservation organization, you know, you, there isn't great road frontage here, that's, that's absolutely true, but the, the Wicopee Creek is an excellent resource. We're really interested in trying to protect that. So, you know, we're willing to, to acquire that, you know, with the understanding that there may be, as a result of this, this subdivision, you know, much more limited building potential for this parcel. That's, we fully understand.
So, so, I'm, I'm going to try to maybe get you zeroed in on what we're asking.
Okay.
So you're saying that you want it in your conservation organization? Is it, is it hiking trails? Is it a campground? Is it, what, what is it that you would typically do with a site like this?
You know, that's, that's to be determined. Public access is certainly a possibility.
Any examples you could give us?
Yeah, public access would be a possibility, like turning this into some sort of preserve, and with nature trails would be a possibility. You know, something else that could be possible would be, you know, future conveyance, subject to a conservation easement, you know, to an interested landowner, like, or to an interested private buyer with a permanent conservation easement, because, for example, there is some former farmland here as well.
Okay.
You know, so there's a possibility that somebody might be interested in the future. We're, we're not quite sure yet.
So, the, the old farm road that's along this, for lack of a better word, pole, like flagpole section here?
Uh-huh.
You, are you going to take an easement on that? I know you are, you don't own it yet, or you're about to.
Well, that would be part of the transaction with, with Heritage Acre.
Right, but you can't, you can't take an easement to yourself.
Yeah, but that's a question I have, is, you don't own this right now, why is this not part of what you're, why are we keeping these parcels out right now?
Because we're only, we're only looking at the subdivision of this, this lot.
Because you're trying to set up the farmland right now, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so, but ultimately, you're going to have, there's going to be access provided to this lot through this lot?
There could be, yes.
Yes.
In there, yes.
We're just trying to figure out what was...
So, Michelle, does this meet our requirements when, when they have the frontage? So they meet their frontage requirement, but feasibly from the lot itself, without an easement? They've got wetland here, you can't, I mean, it would be difficult to traverse that, to get into the site, right?
I mean...
Probably for, you know, a farm road, if, you know, it's there already.
But is the farm, is the farm road on the other parcel, or is it on this subject parcel?
There's, there's intermittent, half-overgrown, some existing farm roads throughout most of this property. They're, they're kind of all over the place on this.
Okay. I guess, I'm just looking, I'm assuming that this pole is here, because that provides access. That, that's why they created a lot looking like that, I'm assuming. So that's probably where the access...
The existing lot that says now or formerly Heritage Acre LLC?
Yes.
That's got that little tiny...
Yes.
...pole that goes, that goes, that goes up into the back.
Yeah. There's also some access off of, it's through subdivision over here, off of Tamarack Drive, which butts right up against our property, against, it's going to hit right up against lot one.
Which, which lot is Tamarack?
It's going to be, it's the best way.
But you got, you know, the creek there, you got the...
Yes, you have to deal, it's something you have to deal with, but, you know, it's, it's not wetland. You can build a bridge or something if absolutely necessary, even a pedestrian bridge.
Does the cul-de-sac run right to that, or...
Especially if it's a farm road, a farm usage. I think with, with Sina Cuts and owning both the parcels in the front and lot one, they, again, we're not proposing any sort of development of this at this time, and if we came back to the board with a proposal for that, and we came back to the town with a proposal for that, of course, it's going to be...
I know, but I think what's troubling everybody is when you say "at this time", and I think that triggers it, that no matter what you do now, the board's going to have to treat it like, what's the viability of future development for access and all the issues that we're talking about? Because normally with Sina Hudson, usually you take, it's conservation, it's minimal use, the farming, open space trails, and I never heard it get to the point "at this time".
I think farming, it would be the, the, yeah, at this time outside of that.
Farming, I don't think anybody has a problem with that. And you were talking, you were talking about farming, you, it seemed like you'd been talking mostly about farming on lot number two. But lot number one, you know, you seem to say, we're not sure yet what we're going to do with it. You know, there's a possibility you may sell it in the future to somebody else. But, so, what we're trying to say is that, you know, if, if it's either you or somebody else in the future on lot number one, if, if anybody was looking to build, you know, a structure that needed a septic system, you know, or something like that, that, really, you can't, you can't really get to the back, or it's not economically feasible, because, you know, it's hilly. So the only areas that are relatively flat are more up towards East Hook Road. And based upon the subdivision that you have, all the areas of your frontage along East Hook Road are pretty much, you know, encumbered by wetlands and buffers, so you couldn't build, you couldn't build any, either you or someone else that you were to sell it to later on could not build anything there.
Well, you know, again, we've...
And again, we're not, well, I don't think anybody's worrying about five houses or, you know, eight, eight houses, but even just, even just one house, I think with all, you know, the restrictions and the Wicopee Creek right there, these areas up in the front here are just not, you know, like, developable for anything.
We would be, you know, in terms of access, we could utilize the, the flagpole that you were just describing. And when you get to the end of that flagpole, and there's a turn, there's a farm road there that then provides further access into the property. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, but if you were, let's just say that somebody, again, I'll use, wanted to build a, a house there, you would still have to get approval from, you know, the DEC to build, you know, a real, like, driveway, not like a farm road. You still have to get approval from, from the DEC to build a real driveway through that long flagpole part, because that's still within, you know, buffer area of their, you know, wetland. So...
That, that's the case already for that parcel right now, is in a, I mean, that's an existing parcel with that flagpole through there, and an existing driveway through there.
Well, when it's one piece, you know, see, the problem would be, is if Sina Cuts and sells the back, and the person who buys it finds all of these obstacles, they let it go for back taxes, it's just a worthless piece of land. So if you can't get the viable road in there to build on it, et cetera.
Now...
It's going to be tax exempt while Sina Cuts owns it, but...
While you're doing the subdivision, it just behooves you to make sure that you have proper access to all the lots, that's just, I think, what we're...
Right, so, so how, how would we resolve that? Because we can't grant an easement over that parcel, we can't grant an easement to ourselves on that.
And that relies to the point that you may not be able to rely on an easement to have access, because you need frontage on a public road, right? I mean, you know, if they were to say, well, we'll put, you know, a conservation easement on lot one similar to lot one, or similar to lot two, that would like restrict any future, like, development, then that probably answers, right? That answers the question. But I mean, if, that's what I started with, but then they kept saying, but in the future. And that's my concern.
I understand, yeah.
Or if you moved a line and took some of the frontage where you have access, that's what, you know, like, where you can, because you can, this, I'm assuming, is politically free of...
I guess I have two follow-up questions. I mean, one, this, this flagpole lot, are, are you saying this is not a buildable lot? I'm, I'm still not sure I'm understanding.
The, you know, the smaller one?
Yes, the one that has this stake here that...
Well, that's not the subject of this application though, correct?
Right, but, but in terms of access, that is also something that we're acquiring as part of this transaction, so in terms of the question of access...
There's structures on that too, right?
I'm sorry?
There's structures on that lot, right?
There are not.
There's not?
Not parcel, no. And the parcel in front of it, there is, there are.
I'm sorry, which parcel in front of it? I'm not seeing which...
Wicopee House? This one right here. There's nothing on the flagpole lot. There is a structure there.
The car lot is actually two lots.
That's what he was pointing to, that's what Jason was pointing to when he said that.
The, the second point I, I wanted to make is that you have the, the Wicopee is coming through here, so adding additional frontage doesn't, doesn't really address any potential concern, because you still cross over the Wicopee.
Right. One of the things that would address it is if you told us you were putting some type of conservation easement on the parcel now.
Yeah.
So we would understand that you're not intending to build it later, that you're not, that we're not going to be looking at, you know, something that's not viable, or that it...
No, I see.
We're kind of creating a lot, and you're not, you're not, you're not committing to the use of the lot, but it's also, when we look at the lot and say, okay, if you're not committing to a use, we have to look at how it's zoned, how would you, how would it normally be developed? How would it normally be used? And we're concerned, because we don't see a viable way to access the lot for any normal use within its zone.
Unless maybe you modify the line somehow.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I was going to say, what if we merge?
If you move this over, for instance, you could have, you would definitely have access to this one, and definitely have access to, that's just an example, right?
I mean, if you looked, right, if you looked at possibly moving this, yes, that, that line.
To make sure you could get...
Yeah, that might access.
But you, but you...
But we would still have to cross the Wicopee. Well, what, as an alternative, would it be possible, like, would it be helpful if we were merging in this, this flaglot here, in terms of the access question, as part of this proposal?
And make it that part of lot two, I guess, the back lot, sure.
Make it part of...
Part of lot one.
Yeah.
Lot one is the back lot.
Yeah. So that, you know, because that has that access, so that the access is clear.
At least they could develop on that area.
Is it, but you're saying, I, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't have the wetland maps in front of me, but I'm assuming...
When I called up, you know, parcel access, there was a DEC wetland down in, down in here somewhere. I would note it here, like, approximate.
Yeah, it's from parcel access.
So anything, even, even, a driveway, even a driveway would be in, you know, the buffer, so...
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Why can't you do a cross parcel easement when the two parcels are owned by the same party? Why can't you set up an easement?
Because you can't have an easement to yourself.
Technically speaking, since the both parcels own and feed by the same owner, you can't grant an easement. I mean, there are ways you could probably do it with entities, so I shouldn't say there isn't a possibility, but...
Okay, because...
It's not commonly done when it's under one ownership.
If you grant an easement to your, an easement automatically extinguishes a part of the ownership of it.
Because if you own the fee, then any lesser interest merge into the fee, because now you're the owner.
Correct, so we create it, and it would immediately be extinguished.
It's an old, it's a real, it's there, but it's in the real property law.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, I mean, it makes something like this more difficult because there's an easy answer here that they could do exactly what they want to do and just do an easement right now.
But they could put a note that upon sale, an easement would be conveyed. A note on a map or something like that, you know.
If you, if you put that on a filed subdivision map, that's a, yeah, that would, that would certainly be an encumbrance untitled.
So they would preserve the access to that, to Lot 1? I think that would work.
A separate entity must have an easement conveyed.
That, that's certainly something, I think, we'd work with, right?
So-
You're looking at the surface?
Sure.
I want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, so you're basically saying that, you know, it's, we get this approval, but it would be contingent that any sale of Lot 1 by Sina Hudson would require a conservation easement?
No, would require a driveway easement.
Driveway easement, so-
We're, we're concerned about the access to the parcel because you don't know how you're going to use it right now. So we have to assume that you'll use it for its zoned use.
So we, we could essentially include this parcel in-
Into the application, right.
And then we would put a note leading to this, the dog tail here, dog bite here, essentially stating that any, any conveyance essentially either one of these two lots is going to require the creation of an access easement.
In the general area. And the general area has to be somewhat a viable area for driveway. You know, you can't go right through the middle of a wetland or something like that.
How does that work with, I mean, I'm a surveyor, not a construction area. How does that work with the wetlands, with the, with the buffers and driveways? Is it possible, permitted, is it?
Yeah, you can get a permit for it in the buffer, but-
They'll give you a permit if there's a hardship. In this case, you would have the argument probably that there is a hardship, but it, in particular-
But what creating hardship, but-
Well, but there's already an existing road though. There's already an existing road, so I think-
But, you know, our, it's just like Sina Hudson has land conservation and preservation. It's there, lofty gold, wonderful gold. The town also shouldn't be participating in lessening or increasing impacts, lessening protections or increasing impacts on a wetlands. So obviously, if there's a way to avoid a wetland or buffer, that would be the way we should go. Okay, particularly since you're asking this board to create this. You know, draw the lines where it is. So that's why there's a concern. Is it possible to get it into buffer? Yes, and it's more possible to do it when that's the only access and it's been approved. So-
So a potential solution, so I, I see a couple of potential solutions here. Would be, one would be to include this parcel into the application and reserve, put in no, reserving an easement at some point if any, you know, if any sales happen, making any sale happen, that is an easement. In that case, we also, you know, to call any concerns concerning, you know, overdevelopment of this parcel and over use of that road, maybe restrict in, in some sense, maybe not a full conservation easement, but in some sense restrict what-
I think just the access, if it's limited to a driveway, right?
I was gonna say, yeah, you don't, don't-
It's in and of itself, so then I don't think-
You said you don't know what your future use is, so we're concerned about access. If you can solve the access and state for the record, you have no plans to further develop right now for the foreseeable future, aside from future conservation easement or something like that.
We have no foreseeable plans to develop in the near future. I can say that on the record.
We understand, we're just, you know, you have a very large parcel here that's gonna be essentially inaccessible if you don't have some sort of mechanism in place to allow that to happen.
Now, this is gonna head to public hearing, correct?
It's gonna have to.
Yes, it'll have to because it's a, it's not a minor subdivision.
So again, all those neighbors are gonna wanna ask these very, so again, hopefully we can get a smoother delivery of the story.
So, so it seems like the access, obviously, is the primary concern here.
For Lot 1.
For Lot 1. And I, it looks like it is a resolvable issue through a couple of different ways. Obviously, we'd have to have some discussion with Sina Hudson over there in town, how they would like to go about resolving that. The, are there other?
Yes, you were gonna provide for us a summary of the intended uses and the way you're gonna put easements on the site right now for Lot 2 with the farm and conservation easement. And then any, any general plans for Lot 1? Just give us a description, even if it's just, hey, in general, Sina Hudson, when they take a parcel, this is what we do with it.
Okay.
We need to understand that and be very clear. If you do have a plan in the works to do something with Lot 1, please tell us and let us know what it is. And again, just if you don't have the plan, that's fine, say that. But say, in anticipation of any future use, we're gonna carve out the ability to access the parcel in this way.
Okay.
Do we want to review that before we schedule this for a public hearing?
I think both of those things are pretty straightforward things. I mean, we, we will probably resolve that, I would say.
I would, I would agree. But Michelle, I did want to, before we, before we jumped the gun here, there was a, a page with the application that requested a waiver of certain-
Yes.
Wired submissions. Have we reviewed that? Are we comfortable that we're okay waiving those? Because I, there were numbers referenced. I didn't have a chance to go back and look at exactly what you were asking us to-
With the Health Department, just asking permission to file, you're not-
That's correct, yeah. Just permission to file for the Health Department. We're not proposing any development. And those were just items that we felt pertain specifically to a development type of application.
Okay, so Michelle, have you had a chance to look at these and make sure you're comfortable? Or do you want to make sure you do that?
Well, as long as we have the access, I mean, I think that's the thing that was making me the most uncomfortable. But, you know, sure, I mean, I can take a look at it. You guys are gonna go and redraw the map, I'm assuming, or do, or add something?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a revision to the map, yes. And we'll put those, some notes on there saying, you know, stating that we're not gonna be developing and stuff too, should aid in that.
So I'll take a look at it again, Lori.
I just want to make sure because we have this as part of our application. So if we, if there's something here that we need or we want, I mean, I think maybe tree survey was one of the things you were asking for.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I don't think we need to survey 200 acres of land that you're not building.
I did 160 acres last summer. I don't want to do it again.
No, I, but I just, I want to make sure that we've looked at this and that we're not just kind of tacitly, tacitly accepting it as without-
Fair and important on your part, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? I know a few of you are looking at the aerials. Any other concern? Okay.
Can we request a public hearing be set on this? Or, oh, someone-
Jason?
Is there access to the top of the property from Logan's Way? I'm looking at a cul-de-sac here.
Are you looking at Lot 2, you mean, or Lot 1?
Lot 2, or Lot 1, I'm sorry.
Logan's Way. I think you said Tamarack. Is Logan the one that's further down?
No, I, I don't believe any other of them, that I think there's parcels or strips in between everything. I'll, I'll confirm that, but I'm, I'm-
I think it's this, whatever this cul-de-sac is, Jason.
That's what he's thinking.
There's one down here that doesn't touch it, but there's one up here.
That's Logan's Way.
Okay, oh, that's Logan's Way, okay.
There isn't, I, I can see that there's probably not access.
But if you're proposing the easement off of the existing small parcel with the flag, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Even if there isn't access on the other side. As long as you have proposed access that's viable, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Michelle, is there anything else we would need to be able to schedule this for a public hearing? I think the two items that we're waiting on are fairly minor in nature. Are we, okay. Bear with me. So our next two meetings, there's one on December 19th and there's one on January 16th.
What's the deadline for the 19th?
So the 19th, the notice requirement would need to be out, what, late next week, I think? 20 days prior? You'd have to have all your notices.
We can make that happen as long as you guys are, yeah. I mean, we can make that happen in my office.
So it'd be like November 29th? You'd probably have to have everything postmarked? I'm looking at Pam because she'll tell me if I'm wrong. Okay. 20 days prior. Our, our planning office can make sure, if you need it, can make sure you know exactly what you need to do to get your advertising and your letters out to all the adjoining property holders. And it's not just adjoining, it's 500-foot radius, so it's-
Yeah, you can grab those names off of parcel access.
Right, exactly. Okay. So, December 19th is-
That's, yes, that's what we'd like to be.
Sometimes vacations and things like that going on, but you're good with December 19th?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be in next week and we'll hustle, we got this taken care of, everything. Or worked out early next week for you guys.
Okay, so do I have a motion to schedule Heritage Acre, two lots on East Hook Road for public hearing on December 19th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next item on our agenda is the Metzger 27 Orchard Place special permit for an office in a residential area on Orchard Place.
Existing use.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch with MA Day Engineering. As you mentioned, we're the site engineers for a 27 Orchard Way. We're here for a special use permit to allow for office use in an existing building that's zoned residential. It is adjacent to the I-2 zone to the rear. And there's also B-2 to the, to the front.
So you're in that transition area?
Yes. So it is in line with the transitional business special use permit. It's a .4, a .46 acre parcel. What we are proposing to do is basically there's an existing gravel drive that's here. We'll be putting sidewalk in there for handicap accessibility and paving this. There are some conversations with the applicant of possibly paving this entire gravel area. But that's to be determined.
Any other changes to the site that you're proposing this time?
Not to, the, the building's gonna remain the same. There's gonna be approximately three people working in the, the, at, at the office. I know there was some comments, which if Michelle wants to go through, and we can, about the number of employees and if there's gonna be residential use on the second floor, which it will not be. And like I said, there's gonna be approximately three, three employees.
Okay, so is the second floor just gonna be unused? Or is some of the employees gonna be upstairs as well?
Um, I think it would just be used basically as storage.
Storage, okay.
Right now, it's, I think, just the-
And there's, you said three employees?
Correct.
And you typically don't have people-
No.
Clients coming?
No, no.
There were two spots that at least labeled on your, on your current map that were encroachments. There was a chain link fence that looks like it might not be yours that is an encroachment on your property. And it looks like the gravel-
There's, uh, there is a chain fence that's here. It's not really impeding anything on the property. There is an encroachment of the existing gravel driveway onto the adjacent property. If you notice, there's a, there's a stockade fence that's there now that's not exactly on the property line. As I mentioned, it's a gravel driveway, so kinda has a tendency to kinda meander off where it is. But as part of this, we'll, we will stake the, the property line and, and revise the, the-
Cure the encroachment on the gravel side, but you're not proposing a move of the chain link fence?
No, not at the moment, no.
Michelle, is that a, it doesn't, I think it's a neighbor encroaching on their site versus them encroaching on a neighbor? That's what it looked like anyway? Am I right about that? It's not your fence, it's-
That's right.
So I don't know that we need to fix that. I just want to make sure we're, we understand we're-
I mean, I don't think there's any reason to-
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
But then, then curbing, you're adding, right? Or have you already added it to the driveway?
Uh, we were, there was a proposal for a curb along the front. There was discussion possibly eliminating that curb along the front.
So you were gonna deal with the highway superintendent on that?
Uh, we, we can, if-
Make sure you were in-
Well, he's been in contact with you on that.
Okay.
I think you're gonna eliminate the shoulder widening.
It's, we're in discussion, yes. Eliminate them.
Where do people park today?
There's, uh, there is a driveway here that's somewhat paved, but there is a, an existing driveway that's to the back. It's just not delineated.
So those spaces theoretically are there today?
Uh, yeah, correct. And, um, it's a gravel parking lot. It's been kinda compacted over the years. But this will just basically bring it up to current code with, with a sidewalk and ADA parking space.
Yeah, I, I definitely think the office use fits with the neighborhood better than a, a house. Particularly since it's, I guess it was an old railroad house and it's, it's right on top of the road.
It is very close.
So we would normally send a business use to the ARB. I know it's a house. And you're, are you proposing any change to the outside of the house?
No.
Are you, or is there gonna be any signage?
Uh, there, we are not showing any now. What is the code requirement? I know, because it's technically a residential.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I mean, you weren't gonna have, were you hopefully not going to have any? Is that what you're, I-
Uh, if, if we're allowed to. I know this is a relatively new kinda overlay district. If there is, we would-
Do we have any requirement that you have to have any sign?
But is there anything that says they can't if they want it? I think that's where you were going.
We, if we can revise, if we're gonna revise on, we can provide it on the-
You would have to, yeah.
We, we'll show it if there's gonna be-
Just submit an application and-
That's not a problem.
And, yeah, and you have to show the location on the map, yeah. But I don't-
For zoning board special permit for an in-home professional office, they're allowed a two-by-three?
It's up, Mark, there's an exemption for it, yeah.
Do those go to the ARB, Pam? When it, with the professional office in home, do those go to the ARB?
So they're allowed a two-by-three use?
I just know we have other, other locations within this overlay.
Just follow that, that sounds like a good idea.
I'm sorry, what? We have, we have other, other locations within this overlay where zoning, uh, sorry, architectural review is probably important. This house seems small, you're not proposing any changes to it. But it's the pleasure of the board as far as that goes. I mean, it's something, we have the, we have the purview within the special permit to ask the ARB to review it if we think it's warranted.
Same with no changes.
I don't see any reason.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's a picture on the application too.
Agreed.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Any other, Michelle, I know, I think we went through most of the points in your-
The only thing I, I would like is if, if you could just provide a narrative.
That's on problem.
We have a description in the file, what, what the use is.
And, and I think we needed, there was no medallion on the map, is that right?
We'll revise the plans to, to include all of the site plan requirements. That was submitted before we retained by the, by the applicant. So we'll, we'll revise them.
Okay, okay. Michelle, is that something we should have before we make a motion? Or is that something we can make subject to?
I think we can make it subject to, are you okay with that?
I think it'd be subject to.
Okay. And just, I want to make sure we have the wording correct for the special permit. So is there a, Tom, do you have a, a motion you would help us propose here to make sure we're issuing this permit correctly?
Yeah, we're gonna schedule a public hearing on the application. Issue special permit.
Is it required? Okay.
All special permits are required.
All special permit, okay. Forgive me, then, never mind.
So it'd be for the transitional, I forget, we'll put the exact title into the-
Transitional business use special permit.
So we have a meeting on December 19th or January 16th?
The submission date would be for next week if we needed to do it for the-
20 days prior to the public hearing. So it would be November 29th. You'd have to have all your notices out.
No, it's more than that.
It's 15 days for the, the plans to come in, 20 days.
For posting.
Wasn't that what I said? Is it November 29th, the 20 days?
December.
December 19th.
So the 29th would be 20 days.
So 29th.
How quick can you move?